...on the call would re-announce themselves, please, and we're on the air. If everyone who's on the call at home would announce themselves, please, we had a technical difficulty due to an inept IT person, so.
It's in the air.
Dan Ratcliffe.
Dan Ratcliffe.
Okay.
Wendy Frank.
Frank.
Marcia Freeman.
Marcia Freeman.
Rick Brereton.
Rick Brereton.
Porter.
Tom Porter.
Mike McGee.
Mike McGee.
George Crawford.
George Crawford.
Yes.
Tom Ratcliffe, you there?
Yes.
Okay, and we got Dan Snows there?
Yes.
We got everybody? Is that, is that, yeah, the clerk will welcome everybody, sorry for the technical difficulty, the clerk will now take the role.
Here.
Brereton.
Here.
Crawford.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Ratcliffe.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ten in participation?
Thank you, we got a full house, thanks everybody, sorry about the technical difficulty, just goes with the day, believe me, so next, under public comment, the city attorney will read the public comment that we received Friday of last week.
And Mr. Mayor, and for the council's edification, showing up as section 5A on the agenda tonight is a proposed policy to provide for executive, what I'm going to do first, we thought it would be a good idea to allow people to make public comment electronically by sending us an email or letter, and then we would read it into the record, given the constraints of the governor's executive order, keeping people home and limiting the number of people that can be in the council chambers at one time, so we put that on the website already, even though the council will be considering that later on tonight, it just made sense, so we did receive one piece of public comment, this comes from Fred Brereton of Allen Street in Belvidere, Illinois, it's a little bit of a lengthy message, and does have some blanks, so I will try and clarify that for you, it reads as follows, "Due to Governor Pritzker's stay-at-home order, these concerns cannot be addressed in person, not knowing how long that order might be in place, please give these comments your serious and immediate consideration, public officials throughout the state and nationwide fear substantial decline in tax collections as a result of the coronavirus pandemic, they are waiting for the first hard data to see how big the decline might be, too, the city of Belvidere's largest sources of tax revenue comes from sales tax and personal income tax, if there is a positive in this challenge the city faces, it is that is taking place at the beginning of the city's May 1 fiscal year, proceeding quote as is end quote, can negate that positive with a precariously balanced budget by being over-reliant on inflated revenue sources, specifically, you are requested to review and respond to the following proposed revenue sources for fiscal year 2021," and this is where it gets difficult to read, where people can't see, but endeavor to do my best, "sales tasks fiscal year 2020, 3,634-"
Three million.
Three, I'm sorry, 3,634,459 dollars, fiscal year 2021, 3,660,790 dollars, an increase of $26,331, and then he requests the reason for that, "income tax, 2,577,688 dollars, fiscal year 2021, 2,686,425 dollars, increase 108,737 dollars," and he asks the reason for that number, "local use tax, 811,045 dollars for fiscal year 2020, fiscal year 2021, 908,267 dollars, increase 97,221, I'm sorry, 97,222 dollars, and requests the reason for that, MFT fiscal year 2020, 558,000 dollars, fiscal year 2021, 564,000 dollars, increase $6,000, and requests the reason for that, video gaming fiscal year 2020, 336,600 dollars, fiscal year 2021, 366,000 dollars, increase $20,000, and requests the reason for that, how is it while public officials throughout the state and nation are fearing substantial declines is tax revenue, the city of Belvidere is budgeting more than a quarter of a million dollar increase?" question mark, "having helped a former city council to navigate through the uncharted waters of the 2008 financial crisis, this request for response comes with a very sincere and sympathetic hope for a speedy recovery, signed, yours truly, Fred Brereton."
Can Alderman Brereton say something?
Yes, there was a request for a response to these questions, and our finance director, Becky Tobin, would like to give that response, and then you certainly can ask a question.
I'm a little biased, and I think it's a great letter, but we're not on TV, can we fix that?
Actually, apparently not, whoop, hang on one second, let me reset something here. Can you check and see if we're on TV now, Mr. Brereton? And if people can't see this, and for those that'll watch on YouTube later, we had our TV station crash earlier today, and I've been trying to get it back up and running, did that work?
Yeah, we're on.
Okay, cool. Okay, Ms. Tobin?
So, in response to that, the numbers that you're seeing in the increase is because we, when we voted last week for the budget, we voted to leave all the numbers exactly the same as had been originally proposed, so that's why you're seeing all these numbers exactly the same, or if some of them have increased, once you touch one number on the revenue side, you're going to touch five to 10 numbers on the expense side, so that would bring us to the point of changing the entire budget, which we agreed, or most of us, I guess, agreed through the budget process not to do at this time, also, I want you to remember that, you know, I've also been doing this 20 years, and saw our way through the financial crisis in 2008, and I rely on a lot of my counterparts, I go through IGF O A, which is our Illinois Government Financers Officers Association, ICMA, which is our Illinois City County Managers Association, and look at what they're doing as well, and there are a lot of municipalities doing exactly what we are doing, they aren't changing their numbers, there's not enough data, and they're proceeding with caution, our proceeding with caution is to not be spending any money on big capital items, to hold off on any new hires, and as time goes on, in a month or two, two months from now, three months from now, I might be coming back to you to say, okay, here's the data, here's what we got, at this time, I'm going to be asking each department to cut back 5%, 10%, 15%, we don't know what that's going to look like yet, I also rely on IMO, every year, they give us numbers that we should be plugging into our budgets for per capita, which is how we come up with our income tax, our local use tax, our MFT numbers, they're revamping their numbers right now, they don't even have those numbers yet out yet, because it is too early to tell, it is just way too early to be making all these assumptions, I could do 10 different budgets right now, that would take me the next three months, but we don't have the data, so it is still my recommendation to proceed as we have been.
Alderman Brereton, you asked to comment.
I have no comment.
Would anyone else like to make a comment, following Becky's answers to the questions? Hearing none, we will move ahead with the agenda, under public forum, we have done this evening, under reports of officers, boards, and special committees, under building, planning, and zoning, and unfinished business, we have none, under number two, building, planning, and zoning, and new business, we have several items, the first is fee and code corrections.
I don't know if Kip's on the phone, so I'll take that one.
What we found in working with the fire department, actually, in trying to streamline how applicants for different permits can pay the city rather than going to two places, we realized that when we adopted the international fire code, some of the links between exhibit, appendix A, which details the fees, and to where they were linked to in our base code, didn't match anymore, because of some of the changes we had made, so what this ordinance does is it essentially makes appendix A match the fees and where they are located within the base code, it does not increase any fees in that paragraph more in the memo detailing with respect to the fire department fees, the second paragraph of the memo talks about the fee for an electrical contractor to register with the city of Belvidere, it talks about increasing the fee from 25 to 50 dollars, again, that was a case where a section of the code reflected a fee of 25 dollars, however, a previous council had actually authorized, and I think it was probably through the budget process, as opposed to an ordinance amendment, had increased that fee to 50 dollars, but was not reflected in the code, so the second paragraph reflects, actually have the code match, what has been the practice with the city for many years of charging a 50 dollar fee for that contractor license, the third section, in the third part of the ordinance, increases the fee for a fence permit from the current fee of 15 dollars to 30 dollars, which makes it more consistent with other similar fees, which are charged by the city with respect to certain types of building permits, and if Kip Countryman's on the phone, if you have questions on that one, I'd ask that they be directed to him.
Do we have any questions? Hearing none, the recommended motion is a motion to adopt an ordinance amending chapter 22 and appendix A of the city of Belvidere municipal code, as attached to Kip Countryman's memo of April 3, 2020, may I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Alderman Crawford will make that motion.
Well, Alderman Stevens beat you to it, but we have a second from Alderman Crawford, thank you, gentlemen, additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, go ahead, was there a question?
I just want to add that the fire department fees that were going to codify into the code have been in place since 2006, they haven't changed, the electrical contractor has been in place since 2010, and with the fence, a typical permit up to $2,000 in value is $65, a fence permit is right now $50, the reason I'm asking to raise the fee to 30 will make it that the fence permit will be $65 along with all the other permits with a value of $2,000.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, sounds unanimous, motion is approved, we'll move on to section B, Gina, are you going to do the special use sections, please? Ms. Del Rose will handle this next couple for us, Ms. Del Rose, you have the floor.
So, as we know, special uses are valid for one year, if you start the process, then you have two years to complete it, so I have a spreadsheet that I keep track of what special uses have started, which ones are operational, which ones haven't moved forward, and at the beginning of the year, I send all the ones that are about to expire a letter as a courtesy, hey, don't know if you realize this, you're about to expire unless you ask for an extension, this year, I sent six letters out, so far, I've had five requests come back in for an extension, four of them came in in time for tonight's meeting, one will be at the next committee, the whole meeting, so, they are, for 982 Belvidere Road, it was a special use for video gaming, obviously, since all the gaming licenses were taken, they could not open up a gaming parlor, because there wasn't any available licenses, so they are asking for an extension in case another license opens this coming year, do you want me to go through all of that at once, or one at a time?
Do you want to take these one at a time, council, or an omnibus motion?
One at a time.
Okay, so, may I have a motion to approve? Excuse me?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, may I have a second?
I'll second it, Alderman Crawford.
Okay, who was the first one?
Snow made the motion, a question for you, where is the, what business is the 982?
It's in the Anytime Fitness Building, it'd be on the lower level, by the yogurt place.
By where?
The DIY yogurt shop, it's in the space next to it.
Up by where, Sosnowski's office and Anytime Fitness were, or are, Sosnowski's office used to be up there on the corner?
Okay, so, okay, formerly, the Genoa Road, okay, that makes sense, okay, I'm thinking Belvidere Road out by Pizza Hut, so, different animal.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That's a unanimous approval, please proceed.
So, the next one is for 1550 Pearl Street, which is the old DMV, they were in a, they had a special use for indoor commercial entertainment, they were going to turn that into like a small banquet hall, where you could rent it out for baby showers, small weddings, you know, it's not a large building, so smaller events, the person that was going to operate that business for them, I believe, was offered another job elsewhere, and with the amount of effort they've put into Coach's Corner, they've opened up a new restaurant in Popular Grove, you know, one business at a time, and this one just did not get done within the timeframe, they have not abandoned the project, but they were wrapping up other new businesses they started before they began this one, so they're asking for the extension.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Stevens, second, please.
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Arivolo, questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor?
Yes, how long are, this is Alderman Snow, how long are the extensions, one year, two year?
The extensions are for one year unless specified else.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed, nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anybody opposed? It's unanimously approved, thank you, my bad. Please proceed, Gina.
The next one is for the property traditionally known as the Iron and Coal Project, Mr. Caldwell has not abandoned the concept of building a restaurant there, obviously, there are issues with the elevation, ADA compliance, other matters, which is why he was doing the Container Park as a short-term development, while he figured out the Iron and Coal Project for the long-term development, he does not want to lose the special use for that project in case it ends up being feasible down the road with some changes that could be made, so he's asking for an extension on that project.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Stevens.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Alderman Arivolo.
I'll second that motion.
I have a second by Alderman Arivolo, and a third by Alderman Crawford, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is approved unanimously.
And the last one for the time-
Hey, Mayor, this is Alderman Crawford, can I ask you a question?
Okay.
Yeah, how many, how many Aldermen are in the meeting, actually there?
Two, Alderman Stevens and Alderman Arivolo.
And Alderman Arivolo, yeah, I, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Gina?
Okay, and the last one for tonight is for the special use for the car wash, that was going to go next to the Speedway at Keene and Corporate, there was a delay in recording the subdivision plat, because he is only purchasing part of that property, subdivision plat has been recorded, now they are working on the land conveyance, and closing documents, and all that other fun stuff that goes with purchasing property, so unfortunately, it did not get done in time to prevent the need for the special use extension, so Mr. Caldwell is asking for an extension, so that they can finish getting the paperwork in order, and then he can begin construction.
Okay, motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Stevens, second, please.
Porter, second.
Excuse me?
Porter, second.
Porter, Alderman Porter, seconded, and thank you, Alderman Arivolo, for jumping in there, additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor?
This is Alderman Snow, question for staff, I assume that she agrees with all four of these extensions, and doesn't have an issue.
Are you okay with all the extensions?
Yes, I'm okay, all of their reasons are valid, and it was not due to them just dragging their feet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, next up, we have a resolution, resolution number 2107-2020, it's a resolution directing the Planning Department to publish the zoning map of the city of Belvidere, may I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Stevens, second, please.
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Arivolo, questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor?
I have one.
Okay, Alderman Frank.
Is this a, did they change the map at all, or is it just another map that they're filing?
And for those that may not have been here, the question from Alderman Frank was, were there any changes to the map?
So, per state law, the city has to approve the zoning map every March, it's a little late this year, because our GIS system was down for a short time, but, so every year, you have to re-adopt your zoning map with all of the rezonings you had approved throughout the year, the only rezoning we approved this year was Bell Rock Industrial, when we pre-annexed it, it was zoned at General Industrial, so that is the only change made from last year's map.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Sounds unanimous to me, thank you very much, and it is approved, and we'll forward to City Council for final disposition, under number three, public works, unfinished business, there is none on the agenda this evening, and under public works, new business, we have a list, so, Director Anderson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor, memo in your packet first up is our pretreatment program, our industrial users review, we have an MPDS permit for our wastewater treatment plant that allows us to discharge effluent into the Kishawaki River, part of that MPDS permit is maintaining our pretreatment program, we have attached to the memo before you is a work order from Baxter and Woodman for assisting our staff in completing the self-monitoring reports, the accidental discharge and select control plan, and an annual site inspection with a follow-up to resolve any deficiencies that are found, if any, for, we have four industrial companies that qualify for our pretreatment program, the cost represents about $2,500 apiece to get, to complete this work, I would recommend approval of the work order from Baxter and Woodman in an amount not to exceed $9,700 for the WWTP pretreatment program industrial users review, and we'll pay for this work out of line item 615-820-6190.
May I have a motion to approve, please, motion is proffered by Alderman Stevens, may I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Arivolo, questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor?
I have a question, Alderman Freeman.
Alderman Freeman, please go ahead.
But, I'm wondering why General Mills isn't one of our industrial use?
Because the processes they have in place currently do not qualify for the pretreatment program, the type of waste that they do, a lot of the waste that we pre-treat for these are all manufacturing, automotive-related, with metals and so forth, and General Mills, being the food purveyor, is the case, and same with the Deans, they don't have to have the pretreatment because of the type of waste, it's more organic waste that they send to us, as opposed to the types of waste that these four factories give us.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Unanimous approval, thank you.
Item B is our, again, with the pretreatment program, it's our 2019 annual report on the program, which will include the industrial users review, again, it's a separate work order from Baxter and Woodman, in completing that report, assisting our staff, and the cost of that is not to exceed $5,500, this report will be submitted to US EPA Region 5, as well as the IEP A, I would recommend approval of the work order in an amount not to exceed $5,500 from Baxter and Woodman, and we'll pay for this project out of line item 615-820-6190.
Snow, make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Snow, may I have a second, please?
Crawford will second it.
Motion seconded by Crawford, questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous, thank you very much.
Item, moving on to item C, again, memo in your packet, White Cliff Lift Station, our upgrade out there, that project continues, when we last did an upgrade out there, we changed the discharge pipe from eight inch to an 18 inch, and the eight inch was disconnected, during construction of this latest upgrade, we have come to the conclusion that going forward, having a connection to that original eight-inch discharge pipe would be a good thing operationally, that provides us a lot of flexibility in case we have issues with the lift station going forward, therefore, we requested a price from our contractor to make, be able to make that connection, and they have submitted a cost of $47,005 to complete that work, in addition to that auxiliary connection to the eight-inch discharge line, they've also submitted a cost of $1,300 to extend a water service an additional 32 lineal feet, for a total change order number two, amount of $48,305, and the original contract amount for this project is $1,080,956.85, and the total change orders to date represent an increase of 4.7% of the original contract, I would recommend approval of change order number two from Stentstrom Excavation and Blacktop Group in the amount of $48,305 for the White Cliff Lift Station upgrade project, this work will be paid for from sewer connection fees 05010.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Stevens, may I have a second?
I'll second that.
Porter will second it.
Second by Arivolo, third by Porter, thank you, there's a little time delay when you guys talk, so sometimes I don't hear you right away, my apologies.
Mayor, I got, I got a question, Brent and Gina are not coming across very loud, not that Gina's going to be talking anymore, but I don't know if he needs to move the microphone closer, I don't know if anybody else is having an issue.
How's that?
Yeah, I had an issue with Gina and Becky.
Okay, can you, can you hear Brent now, because he's got the rest of the program? Can you hear Brent okay?
There's a little time delay when you guys talk, so sometimes I don't hear you right away, my apologies.
Mayor, I got, I got questions for you. Brent and Gina are not coming across very loud. Not that Gina's going to be talking anymore, but I don't know if he needs to move the microphone closer. I don't know if anybody else is having an issue.
How's that?
Yeah, I had an issue with Gina and Becky.
Okay, can you, can you hear Brent now? Because he's got the rest of the program. Can you hear Brent okay?
Testing, testing.
Still not that good.
I don't know what to do except change microphones.
Come on up here if I may. I'll search the pass with you.
And only because you gotta do four more motions and stuff to read, so I just wanted to be able to hear them clearly.
Okay, try again, Brent, can I hear you now?
How's this, better?
Much better.
All right. So...
Questions?
Do you have additional questions or comments on the Whitecliff Lift Station Upgrade Change Order Number Two?
I have some questions.
I do.
Alderman Arivelo first, then Alderman Freeman, then Alderman Frank.
I was wondering if most of this work can be done in-house to save cost. Where the people can't, and the water department can't do, then it can be fixed out?
Um, we could at some point do this, however, because the equipment's there. A lot of the cost is, the actual material cost of the, to do this work. It would be, it's feasible that we could do it ourselves at a later date, however, from a practical standpoint, having it done now by the contractor, while he's there and while everything's already open and excavated, would be the ideal time to do it.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Daniel?
Yes, I was just gonna also say, the reason I was asking that is just, I can tell they're close to retirement age. And I just wanted them to pass along the knowledge, if new blood comes in younger, they're able to teach people how to do the plumbing and all the fittings. Instead of having some people that are inexperienced and when they come in, they won't know what to do.
I have on-the-job training just about on a daily basis in the Public Works Department with the issues we face. We just had an instance over the weekend where we had a house that has two separate sanitary sewers. Unbeknownst to us and unbeknownst to the occupancy owner of the house. So one of their two lines backed up and the other line was working fine. So it was hard to explain, once we found out what actually was going on. So we're in the process of making those necessary repairs in that situation. But as far as excavations and the plumbing work, we do that on a, on a regular basis. So there's ample on-the-job training available for our guys.
Thank you.
If I could chime in, this is Alderman Snow.
Well, I believe there are a couple ahead of you.
That's fine, I just can't hear Arivelo when he asks the question, so I have no idea what he asked.
I don't either.
Can you have the volume on your phones, would you try that? Because everybody's standing, sitting in front of a microphone.
Alderman Arivelo asked if the, if the connection to the eight-inch main could be done in-house as opposed to by contractor.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I'm noticing this because I've never sat where I'm sitting now, I'm sitting where Brent usually sits for everybody at home. There are no speakers in the PA system above the dais where we sit. So it's possible that the phone up there is not picking up what everybody's saying back here very clearly. We might want to do, if there's a question from either Alderman Stevens or Alderman Arivelo, the chair may want to restate the question. So everybody at home can hear it.
Okay, we'd be happy to do that.
And I got another comment on that. Drella is not coming across that clear. The mayor is coming across great. I don't know what the scoop is there, if he's got the hand mic in in front of him, but he's coming across great. Drella is not coming across very clear. I know he was, it appeared he was talking about volume and hearing who can't, but I don't really know what.
Here's the, the instant analysis of the problem. Alderman Drella is now sitting where Director Anderson normally sits and is looking at the ceiling. There are no speakers in the back half of this room. So what we think is happening is when there's, when the mic's at that end of the room being spoken into, that's not being picked up by the phone we're using up here, which is on the mayor's desk. And so Alderman, or the mayor is sitting here along with Director Anderson. So that's why you hear us, fine. I will tell you that today we had a guy in here from Audiovisual to try to look at upgrades because this has been, come to our attention since we're doing these meetings over the phone, that there seems to be sound quality. So we're, we're looking at improving sound quality in here. I believe Alderman Freeman had a question?
Yes, I do. So Brent, the total change orders for this so far is 4.7%. How close are we to finishing this Whitecliff Lift Station? And do you foresee more change orders in the future to come on this?
Uh, I foresee this to be the last of the large ticket items. Um, well, the majority of the work is finished out there. We have some electrical work to do, and it's been scheduled for, I believe, sometime in May to have that total work completed with the project being finished hopefully early in June. Um, so I don't expect if we don't have the last change order, we just need to bring some other things to get cleaned up. But this would be the last of the substantial change orders. And I think this change order isn't for this change orders is again, we feel that it's going forward, it's going to be a benefit to us to have that additional connection for it'll allow for some bypass pumping, some additional capacities if and when we have issues or when we're actually doing maintenance work in the future on that lift station.
Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Also, I'd like to remind everybody that the lift station at White Cliff has proven to be a problem in the past when we've had heavy rains and backups with storm sewer and sanitary sewer. So this was a project that the council urged us to get done expediently. And so we've kind of focused on that for the last year, one step at a time to get it done. Alderman, Frank, you had a question, I believe?
Yes. Um, mine is just that I don't understand, it sounds like from reading the paragraph that it used to be an eight-inch discharge pipe, and now they went to an 18-inch, and now they're going back to the eight-inch. Is that correct?
So, well, the original design of that lift station was installed and contemplated, and contemplated being running stages as development occurred. Um, so with the rainfall and with the infiltration we were seeing, we've gone ahead now and maximized the size of that lift station at this point. So, and development got to the point where the eight-inch was maxed out. So, the original construction included both an eight-inch and an 18-inch discharge line. So at the time when I did the eight-inch and the 18-inch, they disconnected the eight-inch, switched everything over to the 18-inch, and that's what we've been using up till now. So, the eight-inch was left intact with the exception where it was disconnected at the lift station itself. And the way we talked about it, currently, a little more feasible it appeared to us to be able to use that for future maintenance, future capacity-wise, which is where we've decided now to make that reconnection. So we have to put some valves in. So the 18-inch is still going to be used. The eight-inch will only be used in emergency conditions, but at least with those connections and the work that will be done, we'll be able to use that additional capacity.
Does that answer your question sufficiently?
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
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 Is anyone in opposition? Unanimous approval, thank you.
Moving on, next item, item D, the water rate review. As we've previously discussed, and the water department portion of the budget that was approved last week has a deficit end of the year of $18,059. And as we've previously talked, you know, our water usage has gone down from 2014 to the present. And under normal circumstances and what was previously discussed, I would be recommending that we do a water rate increase as part of our '21 budget. Just for information, every penny of increase generates about $10,000 in revenue for us. Therefore, we'd be looking at a two cents per 100 cubic feet increase to eliminate that projected deficit. And for the typical residential family of four, that would be about a $3 per year increase, which is a small increase. But given the current pandemic that we're all going through, now is definitely not the time to be raising the water rates even as less as two cents per 100 cubic feet. So I would recommend that we forego that rate increase at the present time. And we can, as for monitoring the budget and make sure that we are still on a positive cash flow, we can always reduce at this point in time, or going forward, depending on how long the pandemic and the effects of the pandemic last, we can reduce our water depreciation fund transfer in an amount necessary to maintain the balanced budget, which is a step that we took both on the water and sewer depreciation back in 2008, 2009 timeframe where we did that for, we suspended some of the payments for a short period of time. But keep in mind, we make that transfer to the depreciation fund, that's what takes the money and puts it into our savings account, which lets us do these big projects like the White Cliff Lift Station and the other projects that we do capital improvement-wise for water and sewer. So that would be my recommendation going forward. It doesn't take any action at this time. It was just information on the council as we move forward with the budget, which also brings up a good opportunity just to point out the water sewer rate review that I believe was included in your packets, completed by the City of Genoa. It's an annual review with 20 different municipalities in the area. And you'll notice that Belvidere rates are very comparable competitive. In fact, we are, out of the ones that are monitored, we are the most reasonable rates in the area. Where our combined water and sewer monthly bill averages $38.74. The highest, Algonquin, is $90.10. So we could even double our rates theoretically and still come in within, about in the average of what the surrounding communities pay. So we're very fortunate in that fact that we can make our expenses and make our improvements and provide the quality of water that we do at the rates that we charge our customers.
Next up, under E, we have Resolution 2013-20. 20, a resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code. If someone want to address this document, please.
Yep. Next is up the resolution. It's an annual resolution that we do, think of it as your quote-unquote "budget" for the MFT portion of our expenditures, motor fuel taxes is our allotment that we get from the state of Illinois that we can spend on road-related issues projects. So traditionally, in the past, we've done, we've spent this money on overlays, on payment striping, and on the purchase of rock salt for winter snow applications. The amount for the resolution for this year's, in accordance with our budget, is $1.3 million.
I have a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Stevens. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that motion.
Porter, I'll second it.
Alderman Revelo, seconded it. Who was on the line that seconded it?
Porter.
Thank you, Alderman Porter, you get the third. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor?
I have a question.
Okay, Alderman Freeman, please ask.
So Brent, is this money that we already have, or is this money that we're looking still to get from the state? Or, because this goes from January 20 to December of '20? So it's what we're budgeting for 2021, or is this what we already have?
It's a combination of both. It's funds that we already have in balance, and it's revenues that we will be getting throughout the year. So, again, this is, think of this as the budget document. So, according to IDOT, we have to appropriate a set amount of money every year to spend on motor fuel tax, which allows us to go through that process. And then once that resolution is approved, we submit our expenditures to the state, and they review and approve those expenditures. So that's part of the process. Right now, I've just sent down, and I just got back, in fact, my review copy for an overlay program which council has already approved. So we will be in the process of going out to bid for that work, probably sometime in April, May time period, or we're already in April, so May, early June time period, to do that work. So it anticipates additional revenues, and those revenues are from the motor fuel tax that the state collects.
And there was an interesting, good news bulletin today from the IML that the State Comptroller's Office said that payments that are to be let to municipalities will continue without regard to a deficit in the state budget. So that's good news that essentially says we're going to get our money.
So, so the bottom line is, depending on the contracts and depending on what happens with the pandemic and what those revenues are, the projects, our list, our overlay list could be shortened, our products, contracts could be modified based on the conditions that we're seeing out there on the street.
Additional questions or comments?
Alderman Snow has a question.
Yes, Alderman Snow.
Brent, when you submit these, do you ever get kickbacks that say, from the state, denying or saying that, you know, they want you to shorten or lengthen the project or anything like that? What exactly, what real feedback have you ever gotten that was negative or positive?
Well, basically, the state will review it and confirm the fact that the monies are available, whether they're in receipt within our balance or what we're expected to receive through the state's monthly allotments. We get our motor fuel tax distributed on a monthly basis for us. So the state oversees that. And then not only does Dixon IDOT District 2 oversee that, then it's also audited on an annual basis as well. Kickbacks is not a good word to use probably in this case.
Sorry. I mean, you know, rejections or whatever that, you know, they make revisions that they ever want from your list.
Well, they look up to us fortunately to basically, we advise them what roads, what roads we have to overlay, and there are certain funds, state funds that are appropriate for certain roadways. And so for general maintenance, this is our general maintenance. So they're pretty well let us decide which roads they do. They have their requirements, as you're aware, when we do overlays, we have to do ADA compliant sidewalk ramps adjacent to those. So those are things that they control. But they're pretty good at letting us decide which roads we feel need to be overlaid, the best candidates for that work.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Sounds to me like unanimous approval.
Next up is item F, biological oxygen demand. It was prepared, memo was prepared by Attorney Drella, but since he's sitting in my old chair, I'll go ahead and read it for you. The city charges fees for our biological action demand, otherwise known as BODs, and suspended solids for non-residential water users. These fees are required as part of permitting through IPA with respect to the treatment of non-residential wastewater users. The fees were established in 1998 by ordinance 213G. At some point, one of the amendments to Appendix A of our code, which lists city fees, failed to include the BOD fees. The fees are still in place, but we wish to ensure they are also in Appendix A. As such, we have prepared the attached ordinance reinserting the correct fees within Appendix A, which is recommended motion would be to forward to City Council the ordinance as presented to insert BOD fees pursuant to Section 114, 354 into Appendix A. So they're not being changed, they're not being modified. All we're doing by this action is placing them in Appendix A, which, as was said in the memo, at some point in time, they were left off of Appendix A.
So may I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
A motion by Alderman Revelo, seconded by Alderman Stevens. Questions or comments concerning the motion on the floor?
I've got a little question. What are non-residential wastewater users?
Basically, we have, we have two. This goes back to our earlier question on pretreatments. BODs, suspended solids, basically is Dean's and the Chrysler Corporation as far as ones that we charge for BODs and suspended solids.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you, unanimous approval.
And then brings us to item 4G. Tornado sirens or 2020 maintenance agreement from Braniff Communications. Attached to the memo is the proposal from Braniff for the 2020 maintenance program at their estimated cost of $5,400, and the maintenance agreement covers all nine sirens. There's a history in the memo of previous costs for this work. I would recommend approval of the 2020 outdoor warning siren system annual preventative maintenance agreement with Braniff Communications in the amount of $5,400. This cost will be paid for from line item 0152407900.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Stevens. May I have a second?
Porter, I'll second. Porter.
Seconded by Alderman Porter, thank you. Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor?
I have one easy question.
Alderman Snow. Brent, so how often do we actually have them actually come out and actually do a repair or replacement of any of these items?
Um, it all depends. Hopefully, knock on wood, the estimate includes an annual inspection, and where they do the necessary repairs, things they find there now. But given out through any particular year, if we have an issue with a tornado siren, we call them, and they come out to make the reviews. And if it's something minor, something that's covered under the part of the contract as outlined in the agreement, then they take care of it. If it's not, then they provide us a cost for doing that. For example, about six weeks ago, we had an issue with a siren on bonus, and I come to find out it had a fault in the electrical system, the electric line, service line from the siren to the commeds electric box. So we had to have the electrician come and reinstall a cable to get that siren back in operation.
Alderman Revelo, you have a question?
Thank you.
I was reading through the contract and saying, for minor repairs, they'll repair it. But what will be the cost for a new siren if they're not able to replace any part?
I'm...
My honor, really?
Alderman, you're to replace the siren, is what Alderman Revelo asked, right?
And that's what he asked, and I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to get a, I'd have to get that information and provide that to you, but we can certainly get that.
Ms. Tobin, do you have a ballpark?
I'm trying to remember because we had to replace one like three or four years ago.
It's been, it's been long enough, I don't remember.
Oh, yeah. We can find that number for you.
It's a lot.
It is a lot.
I know it's a lot, I was just looking for the, they will do minor repairs, that's not at their fault, they're doing minor repair, but if it's something major and it says they won't cover those costs, I was just wondering how much a new siren would cost if that, hopefully none of that happens.
Do we have, does city insurance cover the replacement or something like that?
All depends on, it, they are listed on the insurance, we do have insurance coverage on them, so it all depends on the situation and what happens to them, what's necessary for the repairs.
Any other questions? Alderman Revelo, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Great, thank you, approved unanimously. That brings us to Alderman Drella. Again, Alderman Drella?
Keep getting this promotion. One second. My computer locked up all, Mr. Anderson was sitting here. Okay, the last thing on the agenda is under Other, and as I discussed at the beginning of the meeting, and I'll go over my memo in a little more detail now, there was a question after the governor enacted his last executive order, which basically gave the capability for Alderman to attend meetings as you're doing now remotely, and essentially waived portions of the Open Meetings Act to allow that to happen. That executive order did not address, however, the portion of the Open Meetings Act which requires the community to allow for public comment whereby citizens from the public can comment and address their concerns, their grievances, their attaboys, everything else to the city council directly. And so the question was, well, are we going to start having these people come to City Hall to do this when you're limited to 10 people in the room? And of course, you have stay-at-home orders in place. And so the county of McHenry came up with a good idea, which the attorney general then okayed. And the idea was essentially to allow residents to submit public comment in writing, the most easiest version, of course, being by email, and then have that public comment read into the record, as we did at the beginning of the meeting, so that people could still address their corporate authorities without necessarily being there in person. We have actually replaced this on the website, even though we hadn't brought it to you yet in anticipation of tonight's meeting. And so the recommendation to give effect to this would be to, as follows. It'd be a motion to limit public comment to written comment at any public meeting which will be read into the record during the public comment portion of the reading, sorry, of the meeting. Any such written public comment must be received by the city clerk no later than 4:30 p.m. the day of the public meeting. The clerk shall provide an email address for purpose of receiving public comment and post that address on the city's website for your notification, that's been done already, actually. Upon termination of the governor's executive orders with respect to the public gatherings during the COVID-19 pandemic, this palace shall immediately terminate, and public comment will revert to its usual requirement of in-person attendance. And I would recommend that that be adopted by motion.
May I have a motion to that effect, please?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Crawford will make that motion.
May I have a motion by Stevens, seconded by Crawford? Questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, approved unanimously. We received another email from Mr. Burton that the public was blocked from hearing the public comment, his letter, and he's requested that it be read again at the end of the meeting, and we're happy to do that.
And again, of course, and apologize for that, we've had some issues with our TV station today, and I think I've got it up and running. Hopefully, you can still see it at home, and we do have technicians out here in the next couple of days to work on it. The original, if everything worked correctly, the original reading, the first reading I did of this will appear on YouTube as well as on Channel 20 when we push it up there for purposes of live people at home. I will reread the public comment as submitted by Mr. Fred Brereton of Allen Street in Belvidere, Illinois. It's regarding public comment. Due to Governor Pritzker's stay-at-home order, these concerns cannot be addressed in person. Not knowing how long that order might be in place, please give these comments your serious and immediate consideration. Public officials throughout the state and nationwide fear substantial decline in tax collections as a result of the coronavirus pandemic. They are waiting for the first hard data to see how big the decline might be. Two of the cities of Belvidere's largest sources of tax revenue comes from sales tax and personal income tax. If there's a positive in this challenge the city faces is that it's taking place at the beginning of the city's May 1 fiscal year. Proceeding, quote, "as is," end quote, can negate that positive with a precariously balanced budget by being over-reliant on inflated revenue sources. Specifically, you are requested to review and respond to the following proposed revenue sources for fiscal year 2021. And again, this, as I stated earlier, the grid is hard to read if you can't see it, but I'll do my best. Sales tax, fiscal year 2020, $3,634,459. Fiscal year 2021, $3,660,790, an increase of $26,331. And then he asked the reason for that. Income tax, fiscal year 2020, $2,577,688. Fiscal year 2021, $2,686,425, an increase of $108,737. And again, he asked the reason for that. Local use tax, fiscal year 2020, $811,45. Fiscal year 2021, $908,267, an increase of $97,222. And he requests the reason for that number, or that assumption. Motor fuel tax, fiscal year 2020, $558,000. Fiscal year 2021, $564,000, an increase of $6,000. And again, he requests the reason. Villa gaming, fiscal year 2020, $336,000. Fiscal year 2021, $366,000, an increase of $20,000. Mr. Brereton requests the reason for that. He goes on. How is it while public officials throughout the state and nation are fearing substantial declines in tax revenue, the city of Belvidere is budgeting more than a quarter of a million-dollar increase? Having helped a former city council to navigate through the uncharted waters of the 2008 financial crisis, this request for response comes with a very sincere and sympathetic hope for a speedy recovery. Signed, yours truly, Fred Brereton.
Our finance director, Dr. Tobin, responded to his questions. Ms. Tobin, if you wouldn't mind to go through that again?
Do you want to come up here so that we can hear it? I don't know, maybe the alderman can respond at home. Was Finance Director Tobin's response heard over Channel 20, or was that missed, if anybody could tell? And there's dead silence. Anybody there? Any of the aldermen there?
I didn't have any issue. I was, I was barely able to hear, but I understood what she said the first time.
Do you want to switch places so it goes over better, over the radio or over the phone? Sorry about this.
It might not be word for word, but... Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's much better.
Okay, so my response, like I said, it won't be word for word, but I commented that the reasons, the numbers that Mr. Brereton brought up as far as the revenues go is because we did not make any changes to the budget. So what was voted last week was the original proposed budget, which included the additional, some of the revenues actually increasing. So had we went and tried to change some of those numbers, that would have been opening up the budget entirely, because obviously if we would change a revenue number, we'd have to go and change some of the expenditure numbers as well. So it was voted to leave those as they are for the time being. I also mentioned that, you know, I'd been closely following what IGFOA, which is, you know, my Illinois Government Finance Officers Association, is doing and recommending, ICMA, which is our Illinois City County Managers Association. You know, and that every municipality is different and going through their own struggles and has their own questions to try and remediate this issue. So I also look for the IML numbers. So every year, especially some of these revenues mentioned in this letter, the income tax, the local use tax, MFT, we rely on data from IML that gives us a number that we should use for per capita. Those numbers are going to be revised, but here again, it's just too early. They, they're still working on those numbers, and they have not released those out to the municipalities yet. So once I have better data, as we had talked about before, we'll be able to move forward and make some adjustments. We are doing what a lot of other municipalities are doing right now, which is holding steady with their budget, but proceeding with caution. We have already said there won't be any new hires, there won't be any large capital expenses, any of those things. So we're already proceeding with caution. In two, three months, I might be coming back to you with much better data, and at that time, we may have to do cuts. At that time, it might be a 5%, 10%, 15% cut that would be, I would be recommending across the board for each department, but we just don't have that data yet. So at this point, hopefully that answers your question.
Okay. That brings us to the end of our agenda for this evening. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Crawford put that motion.
I have a dual motion from Stevens and Crawford. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I guess not. So thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a safe and pleasant evening. Good night.
Thank you.